I now declare the Plano City Council Preliminary Open Meeting is reconvened in open session. That all council members are present. Councilmember Julie Holmer is not here right now, but she is in the building. Our first item is preliminary agendas, consideration into action resulting from executive session. Our next item is presentation of possible direction regarding legislative program, Director of Policy and Government Relations, Andrew Fortune.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me get it here. All right. Well, I wanted to come before you all as we are now a little over a quarter of the way through our legislative session. If you recall, we did bring a legislative program to you for your review and approval, and we have been operating from that document. I wanted to also highlight, we have hearings that will begin soon on bills. The bill filing deadline is coming up pretty soon. It's going to be March 10th. However, there has already been a record number of bills that have been left with the drafters at this point. Just a high-level look, we have a record-breaking surplus of almost $33 billion this biennium for the state. Big issues that they're looking to undertake would include property tax relief, the power grid, border security, education, and election integrity. I wanted to highlight the governor's priorities that he released recently, most notably property tax relief. I think it's at the front of everyone's mind. He and other leadership in the state have committed $15 billion to help buy down property tax relief. Now, there are multiple ways that he has proposed to do this. There's an initiative over in the Senate to really address the homestead exemption. The governor's proposal, however, is to buy down the school portion of the property tax rate, which would help compress those rates. I would note that that is really a one-time fix. It's a one-time investment, and so we would be looking to future opportunities down the road to continue that kind of relief. As you can see, there are other items here. Really, again, we look to our legislative agenda before we dive into any of these priorities. And as these bills are filed and we look at these, we're looking through the scope of what's going to be best for Plano. And we may come back to council on a variety of items. I wanted to also highlight, for those of you who aren't familiar with the process, bills all go through a group called our Legislative Council. This is a nonpartisan agency, a group of attorneys really, who do the impartial research and drafting of our legislation. And so, this to make sure that everything is up to par. I will note that they were so overwhelmed this go-around that they actually brought their deadline further up to February 17th. We've had a 20% increase in these drafting requests. So, normally on an average session, we could expect to see 7,000, 7,500 bills. We're anticipating quite a few more this go-around. From a bill-tracking perspective, again, as I mentioned, March 10th is the deadline. We are just under 5,000 bills that have been filed thus far, and we are tracking 845 bills that directly pertain to something within our legislative agenda. I wanted to highlight our delegation. As you may remember, we had redistricting, and so we've picked up a few members. I've also included each of their committeeships, and really, we have a nice spread across really all the committees. We are, we do have one chairman on our House side, Chairman Jeff Leach, but we're going to be working with each one of our members on all these issues, but where it pertains to their respective committee, we'll, of course, approach them first. Also wanted to provide a map so you can see how some of the lines and districts have changed. You can see certainly District 66 and 70 comprise the majority of Plano from a land mass perspective, but we work to have great relationships with each one of our members. On the Senate side, again, the majority of our city is represented by Senator Paxton. She is Vice Chair of State Affairs this go-around. We also have portions of Plano that are represented by Senator Springer. And again, there's the updated map, so you have that for reference. Now, to dive a little bit into what we are looking to work on this session, we have engaged Representative Noble to tackle the issue of public facility corporations. If you remember, this particular tool has been discussed in the past, and there was concern raised over the guardrails that exist in statute right now. And as a refresher, this tool exists currently where a housing authority or an entity can come together with a developer and offer 51% of their units in a multifamily property as affordable. The other 49%, of course, can be rented at market rate, and the entire property falls off the tax rate. And so, some of the things we're looking to pursue, and in fact, they have submitted bills for us, Representative Noble's and her office have submitted bills to tackle the issue of local approval. These projects should, and do not currently, come before any of the taxing entity bodies. So, if it's going to fall off of the tax rules for the city, we believe this body should have the opportunity to at least review those projects as they come up. We're also looking to raise that percentage threshold from 51% of affordable units to 75%. After visiting with professionals in the field from our Neighborhood Services Department, we do believe that if we're going to offer that big of a break, we really need to have a justifiable offering in terms of affordable units. It also adds an annual audit requirement, which we thought was important, along with the penalty if we have properties that are found out of compliance within that year. They would lose their tax exempt status. So, these will be in the form of two different bills. We've had a few other bills filed on this issue this session. Senator Betancourt, most notably, has a bill that would repeal the entire statute as a whole. We don't anticipate that moving forward in its current form, but certainly generating a lot of discussion. Other legislation of note, one of the biggest right now would be House Bill 2127 and Senate Bill 814, its companion. We're calling this our super-preemption bill. As you can see here, this preempts this body's ability to regulate anything within these codes that are listed, with very few notable exceptions. We are opposed, really philosophically, for a lot of reasons on this bill when we look at the idea of local control. Again, y'all have heard that, I'm sure, before, but what's good for Austin may not be appropriate for Plano. What's good for Corpus Christi may not work in our community. We'd like to maintain the ability to still make those decisions with this body, based on what we hear from constituents. That being said, the governor's office, the mayor and I had the opportunity to meet with him last week. He has requested specific examples of the unintended consequences that may accompany bills like these. And that's really what we're dealing with, is we want to make sure that when we have a preemption bill introduced, that we drill down to what the root issue is. And if there is a city that has gone rogue, or there's a specific issue, we'd like language that would address that issue as opposed to these blanket language introductions to these bills. So, one other bill that has made a lot of headlines recently, Senate Bill 147, sought to ban citizens, governments, and entities from China, Iran, North Korea, and Russia from purchasing land. That has generated a lot of discussion and has, as such, rose into the level of us managing and tracking that closely. Our goal is to remain Plano-focused and business-friendly, and so as we watch this legislation and subsequent other bills that are being filed, we'll be tracking that very closely. And finally, I wanted to bring forward the issue of DART and the Value of Transit Study. As many of you may remember, we had, along with other cities, asked for a Value of Transit Study from our partners with DART. And I'd also like to recognize, we have the CEO, Nadine Lee, and the CFO, as well as Vice President of Government Affairs here in the audience with us. But we had asked a little over a year ago for a Value of Transit Study. Unfortunately, what we've received to date has really been more qualitative in nature, and we really are looking to seek to ask the question, you know, if the city of Plano puts in 106 million into DART, what does that translate back to us in terms of services? We realize there will be other costs, program systemic costs that we, of course, help pay for, but our hope is to find, you know, what does that look like? And so, in terms of the timeline, again, we asked for this well over a year ago. Unfortunately, the answers we've gotten to date have not been satisfactory. Councilmember Williams has been championing the reintroduction of a bill from last session with Representative Shaheen, and that really covers the idea of an annual audit and a disaggregation of expenditures, making those available to the public. Where we're coming to you tonight on this particular item is permission to bring about our legislative agenda and add working with DART and looking at various elements of DART when we're going down to Austin. So, that's that piece. And one final element, not on the slides, I wanted to bring to your attention, we are engaging right now on the utilities and utility relocates, and knowing that they're very expensive, and that we continue to run into issues with that, we're looking for a legislative solution. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Andrew, I've got a couple of speakers, so let's do that first, and then we'll have you come back and answer any questions we have.
The first speaker is Nadine Lee.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nadine Lee, and I'm the President and CEO of DART. And by the way, I have some people coming in behind me, just in case I had fallen down the stairs today, so. So, I'm really pleased to be here, really happy to see that the ILA between DART and the city of Plano is on the consent agenda this evening, which will provide the city with more than $28 million for projects that support your strategic vision for excellent multimodal transportation here in Plano. We're really excited about this partnership, and we look forward to collaborating with you closely on all of these investments. And I know you're going to consider that item tonight. I hope you do pass it. You will be the fifth of the cities to execute this ILA if you do so. So, we've had four other cities who have already signed. We've been engaged with the city of Plano on many projects over the years, prior to my tenure, and more recently, like with this ILA or the new Plano Pilot Zone for our on-demand GoLink service. And we regularly update your city management and you, the council members, on these efforts. I'm really pleased to let you know that the city of Plano is in good standing, and we expect that that will remain the case. The Plano staff has really been terrific for our staff to work with, so I want to thank Mr. Israelson for all of his hard work and his great staff. In regard to your legislative agenda, more recently, or most recently, as you may know, we have been working with Councilmember Williams and the DART Board of Directors who represent Plano, Paul Wageman and Nathan Barbera, to estimate the amount of DART spending attributable to the city of Plano. And as you might expect, this is a very complicated question, and one that doesn't necessarily speak to the full value DART brings to its member cities. So, to try to answer these questions, however, our CFO, Elizabeth Raich, who's here with me today, has brought together the CFOs and finance staff from all 13 of our member cities to discuss a consistent methodology for allocating expenses to each city. Each city, of course, has specific needs and methods for evaluating the benefits of participating in DART, and we all need to agree on a framework for moving, before moving forward with any particular approach. These conversations have been productive so far, and Elizabeth has another meeting with the group this Thursday to discuss proposed scenarios in more detail. We will continue to update Councilmember Williams and others as we finalize our response, and we really appreciate your patience as we work through this very difficult analysis. We're also nearing completion of our Value of Transit Report, which Andrew mentioned earlier. That will include, ultimately include, a fact sheet that's unique to the city of Plano. And I believe the city manager also has a copy of the preliminary draft report in his box to review, and I'm sure he's very busy and probably hasn't had a chance to review yet. So, we're really eager to share the many benefits that DART brings to each of our member cities, our residents, and the region as a whole. We've met several times with the city managers of all the member cities, and will continue to partner with them and with you as we develop a more responsive, service-driven transit system. So, I want to thank you for your time. We look forward to continuing the conversations with you as we improve mobility for this region. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Raich.
Thank you, and good evening, Elizabeth Raich. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Dallas Area Rapid Transit, simply here this evening to answer questions, should you have them, but wanted to make sure I signed up so that I was able to speak if you had questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Andrew, you can come back up. We can do that, yeah. You want to start with that? Okay. We do have a question.
Sorry, Andrew, I have a question.
No, no problem. Sorry.
So, I don't know who wants to answer it, but Ms. Lee, you mentioned that Plano is in good standing, and so I just wanted to know what your definition of good standing is and how you're defining that we are in good standing and would remain in good standing in the future.
So, I'm going to take a crack at this, and of course, Elizabeth will correct me if I get anything wrong, but good standing is really just being a good partner to DART, helping us advance our design approvals and getting our construction permits timely. The city of Plano has been really terrific at doing that. We have not had any issues. In addition, if you had any outstanding payments to DART, for example, if you were paying us to do some service for you, and it's something that we expect those revenues to come into DART, just making sure that those payments are made timely also, but we do not have that situation with the city of Plano.
Okay. To me, it seems a little bit objective on your part to define if, based on what you said, so I think I'd be more comfortable if it was lined out exactly what is considered, because we might think we're in good standing, and according to what you said, it might seem like you don't think that we are in the future, so that makes me a little bit uncomfortable. But I would like, I'd like to see that lined out a little bit more about how you're qualifying that somebody's in good standing, and I think it could get a little bit uncomfortable if you're defining that by how quickly you get a building permit.
Yeah, and what I will say also is, if there's any disagreement about whether or not the city is in good standing, it would be up to me and your city manager to have that conversation. But again, the city of Plano is in good standing. We have issued a letter to the city manager to say so, and so, as of right now, you all are in good standing.
Thank you.
Councilman Rick Adeli.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Lee. I appreciate your comments. I also appreciate you being here and want to speak to the importance of tackling transportation as a regional issue, and I appreciate the work that you do on that for Plano and the other member cities of DART. I have been following, you know, the back and forth regarding a quantitative assessment of the value of DART services that are delivered in Plano, and, you know, you rightly highlighted the leadership that Councilmember Williams has exercised on this issue, but I wanted to underscore it, certainly not just, you know, Councilmember Williams. I'm certainly watching that. I suspect a number of us are. As you may remember, last session, Representative Shaheen filed a bill. That bill was withdrawn, you know, with the understanding that DART would be voluntarily providing information, and, you know, we're here two years later at the next legislative session, and while we have received some documents and kind of a qualitative analysis of DART services that are delivered in Plano, we've not received, you know, hard numbers regarding, you know, a quantitative analysis of the financial value of DART services that are delivered, you know, specifically within the boundaries of the city of Plano. And so, I just wanted to better understand if there is a difficulty in tracking that information or providing that information, or just understand the timeline of that over the past two years better. So, thank you very much in advance for that information.
Certainly, and I'm going to ask Elizabeth, because she's the CFO, and she will go through the excruciating details of why it's challenging.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that, Ms. Lee and Ms. Raich. I appreciate your information.
Thank you. Part of the difficulty with tracking costs by city is that our accounting system, our financial system, does not track costs by city. So, in conversations with Councilmember Williams, we've discussed that anything that we do is going to be a broad estimation. And as long as, you know, we're all understanding of that, I think then it can be some useful information. So, we're looking at making some assumptions, broad assumptions, and that's what we've got to get the cities to agree to. So, for example, and, you know, please don't think that this is a serious example, but it certainly is a starting point, the first thing you could do would be to divide DART's expenses by 13. There are 13 cities that participate in DART, and I think we would all agree that that's not a reasonable way to do it. So, then we look at another possibility. Do we divide DART's costs by population of each city, by square miles of each city? What does that look like? And so, what we're looking at doing is coming to an agreement of methodology with the cities that divides those costs and examines and looks at the fact that we are a system, that it, you know, we don't track things that when you cross a city line, we know that the cost has now shifted, and so how do we parse those out? And so, what level of our cost is divided among the 13 cities in a certain way, maybe by population, and what level of our cost is more specific to the number of bus stops you have, or the number of stations you have, or the number of GoLink zones you have, or maybe the number of residents that have access within half a mile? So, we're looking at what those possibilities could be, and it's very complex in terms of working with the cities and trying to figure all of that out, but that's what we're doing right now.
Well, and thank you so much for that explanation. I appreciate that. I do think, at least from my perspective, it would be very useful to have information that goes, that, as you alluded to, goes beyond just, you know, the population or square mileage methodology to really look at, you know, how many miles of rail, how many bus lines, how many bus, you know, how frequent are the stops on those lines, and how many buses operating on them, you know, how many GoLink zones, and what's the utilization there, and, you know, a lot of other factors, you know, relating to actual services delivered in the city, while recognizing, of course, that the whole point of DART is to be regional and to cross city lines, and, you know, I've certainly ridden the red line, you know, to downtown Dallas and back, and I understand that's a, you know, a Plano resident using it even if I cross a city boundary, but I think just understanding, I guess, at least for me, what would be useful is the cost of providing those services in the city of Plano. That is to say, you know, if DART suddenly stopped providing all services in the city of Plano, how much money would DART be saving as a result of doing that? You know, if, you know, if the red line went away, if the silver line wasn't being built, you know, if other, you know, all the buses stopped running and everything along those lines, you know, changed, you know, what would be the financial difference? And I understand then you've got other things like, you know, overhead and management and, you know, things that are broadly attributable to the system as a whole that perhaps everyone is responsible for prorata, you know, as you alluded to, but I just think really drilling down on, you know, how much money is being spent in each city would be really useful information. So, I appreciate, you know, y'all's openness to conducting that study and, you know, really look forward to the information, so.
A couple of other pieces, if I may. Of course, we have debt, so, and we have capital, and there is a statutory methodology for dividing our debt and capital, so we're following that statutory methodology, so that will be part of what we deliver, is how much of those are attributable to Plano. And then, there are some system-wide costs that are not in Plano but are connected to. So, the TRE, for example, has a station in Irving, a station in Dallas, but that is something that every city can benefit from because it's connected to the DART system. And so, it does become quite interesting, and so we're working through it as quickly as we can, and trying to get something forward that the cities will accept and that will be acceptable to Plano.
Well, thank you for your work on that. I appreciate that, and I really look forward to the information. So, again, thank you both for being here and for that information.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions for Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew.
Yes, ma'am.
At the end, you mentioned our focus on utilities.
Absolutely.
I would love it if we could highlight a little bit, dig in a little bit more on the utilities in our legislative agenda, if possible.
Absolutely.
And some of the challenges we've had specifically in Plano with the service outages.
Absolutely, and for the benefit of the rest of the council, we continue to run into issues when we look at things like projects where we widen a street. You may often see where a street work is starting to happen and cones are up, and then work seems to stop, and that is largely attributed to the relocation of these utilities. Chiefly, electric is where we seem to constantly run into issues. And so, while we do have some broad authority in our agenda, what I would seek tonight from this body would be direction on, could we include a more broad look at DART and DART-related legislation in pursuing some of the priorities of this council holistically, but as well look at our utilities and look at pursuing some accountability within statute. Currently, we have remedies in statute to compel them to start work, but unfortunately, there's no definition as to when that work needs to be completed.
So, in regards to direction, as far as our legislative agenda goes, adding those two last areas that we were just listening to, is the, is the council in agreement to adding those? You know? Yes?
I'm just raising that.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm in agreement. I did also have a question for Andrew just regarding the PFCs. Thank you, Mayor. No, 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 I just, I didn't want to interrupt the direction we were giving, but I just wanted to ask on Representative Noble's bill regarding the public facilities corporations, because I think that's a critically important issue to the city, given the potential impact on the tax base and, you know, the desire that affordable housing be furthered in a way that, you know, that does not, you know, undermine our ability to provide city services through our tax base. I noticed that there was a move on the number of units that are reserved as affordable housing from 51% to 75%. One of the other issues that I think we've seen is that 80% of AMI is not that low, you know, in terms of providing, you know, really affordable housing and getting bang for that buck if there is going to be, you know, a tax consequence for the city. Is there anything in that bill that would, that would provide at least some units at 60% or 50% of AMI?
So, we did discuss that with the representative. She did have a clear kind of direction in mind. That was not one of the pieces that was something she wanted to undertake in this particular set of legislation. It is split into two bills. One is a lot, what I would call cleaner, in that it's to really deal with the local entity's ability to have a say. That being said, there is other legislation related to PFCs that has been introduced, and we've heard other bills between now and March 10th may also be filed to tackle that issue of what is affordable. I think you're going to have multiple different discussions over that, and that was probably going to be something that really is borne out between the members on setting that. We stick with 80% AMI because that's kind of the HUD standard, and that's what most within the industry are accustomed to. That being said, it looks like this particular piece of statute needs some cleaning up, so it's certainly something I can bring up with her again, and maybe in the form of an amendment, if she is the author, is acceptable, we can.
Well, thank you, and, you know, I think, so in either version, that local approval piece is there, which I think that is the key portion, you know, that we have control over our local tax base, so I guess, you know, anything that includes that, I'd be thrilled to see pass. And do you know, if any of that is moving, does it seem to be moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, we're a little early to speculate on movement. I will say, when we have polled our other cities, that is one of the chief concerns. You may have disagreement over percentage levels or thresholds, but the fact that these projects can move forward without the taxing bodies' input is a pretty resounding consensus from everyone, and really, from the representatives, I think it goes back to just basic representative government. They want to have elected officials' hands on these projects.
Absolutely. Well, I do agree, that local approval is the most important piece, so thank you for your work on that.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Andrew, I just want to make sure that with council's agreement a minute ago, you feel you have enough latitude to pursue anything related to DART on the legislative program?
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. I also wanted to provide just a little bit of, a little bit more context to the entire council in this request. So, as Councilman Rick Adeli pointed out, Representative Shaheen did file this bill two years ago, seeking to understand what is actually spent within each of DART's member cities, and not just necessarily then related to DART, but that's the focus of it. But that came after about a year and a half of worth of requests to get some of these numbers and not receiving anything. And as was pointed out, it was after DART agreed to provide that information that the bill bill was then withdrawn, about two years ago. And some of you may recall, about a year ago, we received a report from DART, about fourteen, sixteen some odd pages, talking about the benefit of DART, which was ostensibly the, the year-long product of that request after the bill was withdrawn. That was unsatisfactory, so the value of transit study that was referenced earlier, also ostensibly, the purpose of the value of transit study to begin with was to convene the DART member cities and get a methodology which everyone agreed on to produce a quantitative value that each member city could be confident in. That's what has failed to materialize through the value of transit study. So I do appreciate Elizabeth and Nadine's efforts to convene the CFOs to start discussing this very recently, but in terms of the legislative session, it was with about six seconds left on the clock. So that's why we are asking for authority to add these matters to the legislative program as we head to the Capitol.
Thank you.
I'm going to skip the next two and go to item seven, discussion direction regarding the process to select associate municipal judges. So Judge McNulty, thank you for being here.
All right, thank you for having me. I have no particular presentation to make. I'm here to respond to any kind of questions that you all may have.
Councilman Rigadelli, go ahead, and, and this was your question.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Protem, I should say, too. And I requested to put this on the agenda, and Chief Judge McNulty, thank you so much for being here tonight. As I think we all, through the, the process of hiring Chief Judge McNulty as our chief municipal judge, and, and, you know, he has been excellent, obviously, so far in that role, I think we all learned a little bit more about what the charter says about the role of the council with respect to the appointment of municipal judges, including associate municipal judges, and Section thirteen dash three A says that all municipal judges are appointed by the city council. So I just want, wanted to make sure that we work with Chief Judge McNulty on designing a collaborative process where we make sure that, that, that as a council, we're doing what I think is our, our duty under the charter, to, to perform a meaningful review of this process, to participate in a meaningful way, while still recognizing that, obviously, Chief Judge McNulty's recommendation is going to be the biggest data point because he best knows the, the skill set that's needed to succeed in this position, and, and, and the fit of individuals, you know, within the court, and, and obviously ultimately will be this individual's boss once they are, once they're appointed by the council. So, you know, I, I think that's, you know, the biggest data point, but under the charter, you know, we, we have this role, we're accountable for the decision that we make, and so I just wanted to make sure that we have a process where we've done our due diligence and fulfill our responsibilities under the charter, and so I thought it would be great to have a conversation with Chief Judge McNulty about, you know, how we can partner on a collaborative process that respects the fact that Chief Judge McNulty obviously has insight into this that, that we don't have, but that still performs the, the role delegated to the council by the charter in a meaningful way.
Deputy Mayor.
Chief Judge, so I, I just wanted to make sure that I understand the historical with regard to the, to the charter. So I believe it is because we became a court of record that now we have additional responsibility under the Texas Code that sort of get transferred into our, our charter. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
Correct. It's the Texas Government Code is what guides our, our court, and it also has contributed to what has been melded into the, the city charter. That's correct.
So basically, prior to being a court of record, we did not have the compliance requirement, but now we do because we are now a court of records. I, I'm trying to read that, is that really?
I want to say sometime in 2013 is when we became a court of record.
Right.
And prior to that, judges were appointed in definite terms.
I see.
By the city council.
So even before we were a court of records, we were pretty much in compliance because, in essence, the way our council really appoint our judges really is to appoint our chief judge, and, and then we put our trust in the chief to select the appropriate individuals who could assist in running the municipal court. Am I correct?
That's correct, but it's all subject to council's approval, obviously.
And so I guess my, my question to you is, in, in a way that will not interfere and interject the, the personal and political opinion of the council, but yet still be able to comply with our duty to make sure that we are, you know, complying with ordinances, what do you, as chief judge, suggest how we go about in the future appointments or selection of associate judges?
Well, that's, that's kind of a difficult question, and I can give you a very self-
I'm sorry, because I'm putting it to you.
I can give you a very self-serving answer, but.
And that's fine.
When, when, when I was appointed, I told you all that I was going to make sure that we had absolute transparency with this court. Anybody has any questions, feel free to call. I return calls, I, I submit my reports, and I respond to phone calls, respond emails, and I encourage that. I encourage all that input from council and other members of the executive team. We can't, we'll never be a perfect court, and we can't be a better court without input from everyone else, okay? Fully cognizant of separation of powers, we are always open to the input from other people, from litigants, from attorneys, from council members, from people within the city. So the way we do it now, I think, and, and let me, let me stop for just a second, because at each stage of this selection process that we have started in the last month, I have kept you all up to date on everything that we are doing, and that was my intent from the beginning. I want to make sure that you all are involved and know exactly what's going on, not to get involved in it, but just to be aware of each step. Traditionally, the chief judge will conduct interviews, and I've whittled it down from forty-two people to five at this point, conducted all five interviews, and now it's going to be a, a matter of breaking it down to three, and then ultimately to one person. Again, these will be, the ultimate selection is submitted to you all. You have the absolute right to reject it and tell me, go back to the drawing board, this person is not acceptable to us. And that's it.
I, I wanted to clarify something because the materials I gave you prior to the meeting, we're just looking at what the law is now. The municipal courts are governed by Chapter twenty-nine of the Texas Government Code, and courts of record are Chapter thirty of the Government Code. Chapter twenty-nine says you defer to your city charter on the appointments of the judges, so the charter language took priority. When we moved to court of record, we then had clear direction from the court of record provisions. I don't, I didn't look at what the charter said before, and I don't recall how we did it before. So I'm not, I'm not sure about any of the prior to being a court of record. I just wanted to make that clear.
We were, we were appointed on the recommendation of the chief, chief judge, and it was, for all intents and purposes, a lifetime appointment.
You were talking, you're talking about as an associate judge.
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct. The chief judge, obviously, was appointed by the city council.
So my question to you is, my next question would be, now that we understand that we have a responsibility to participate with, you know, with your recommendation or with respect to the court, as part of our duties to, you know, to be part of the selection process, associate judge, you recommend to us, how are we to know the difference between whether or not one person is better than the other person? I mean, what knowledge do we have? Are you going to provide that to us, or are you going to provide the backgrounds, how you came to this five, or this three, or this two?
You have absolutely every right in the world to ask me how I arrived at my decision. You have absolutely every right in the world to see the background information. That's, that's part of your responsibility as city council, and I am absolutely open to doing that. If you want to get together and meet at some point and go over the five applications, I can go over my notes and the criteria that I've gone through and tell you why I reached the, the decision that I reached.
Well, Judge, I, I'm not trying to put a, you know, some sort of routine in place right now, but I want something that could be put in place so that if, there's consistency from council to council. So we don't, in this council, we do it this way, and then another council, we do it another way, and we have different interpretation of how the charter should be implemented or enforced. So I kind of like to have some sort of way that we can figure out if there's any consistent way that we can all agree to. I, I think that's where I'm going with this.
And unfortunately, the way that, that, that the charter is drafted, it's very vague. It's very vague as to the responsibilities of the city council and the selection process. Okay? That is, that's a decision that's made at a much higher level than me. It's a legislative issue for all intents and purposes.
Mayor Protem.
So I'm personally comfortable with the chief judge making recommendations to us and then us voting on them. I think, as he mentioned, he gives us direction, and he gives us notes on why he thinks this is the best person. I think that this person's going to be reporting directly to the judge, and so he needs to have somebody he thinks is qualified, and that person needs to work well with them, not with us. They're not a direct appointee reporting up to us. So I'm more comfortable with him having that really close touch point. I also think that, to the Deputy Mayor Protem's point about putting something on the books so that it stays, any council can come after us and change what the process is. So I don't personally, I don't personally think that that's necessary for me. I, I think the process is working well now. If we want to add some more details that you provide us, maybe that's fine, but I think it's working fine.
Everybody okay with that?
I was, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to make a suggestion. I didn't want to lead off with this because I, you know, first of all, I wanted to hear from Judge McNulty regarding suggestions, but as I mentioned at the outset, you know, the, the charter does say, and, and we've heard different interpretations of this, but it says the words, "All municipal court judges shall be appointed by city council." You know, that doesn't mean that we're doing the inter, you know, the, the whole forty-two person, you know, process and all of the interviews necessarily, but ultimately, it does mean that we, you know, bear a high level of responsibility for, for who is appointed. And I think in order to take on that responsibility, and I, I'd love the council's thoughts, Chief Judge McNulty's thoughts, but I think if we had the resumes, you know, for all of the finalists, not just, you know, the recommendation, you know, the one recommendation, as we've traditionally had, if we interviewed, you know, at least the, the person who we're actually appointing, you know, the person who's recommended, you know, potentially on the evening where that's on the consent agenda, just so that we can, you know, have done our due diligence, where we've at least, you know, talked to the person who we're voting to appoint, and, you know, and then have a presentation from Chief Judge McNulty in that executive session with essentially what you said, Judge, you know, that going through your notes, explaining what was important and, and why you've reached the recommendation that you've reached, and, and then, you know, somehow have a, a process for public comment on the proposed appointment. I think, I, I think with, with those four ingredients, we, we'd have a really successful process that would still, you know, respect the, the fact that ultimately this associate municipal judge is going to appoint, or is going to report to the chief municipal judge, but also fulfill well our role where the charter says that, that ultimately this is an appointment by the city council.
I would like to take as many steps as possible not to create a political position in this, and it sounds to me like that's, we're getting closer to that. I really would like to try to avoid that.
If, if I may say, I believe US magistrate judges and bankruptcy judges, I believe there's, there's public comment on that, you know, and I, and I, I don't think that's a political position, and I'm certainly not suggesting that we should try to make this a, a, you know, a political position.
Okay. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Listen, everybody, I think, you know, all good, good ideas positions. What I would suggest, I think we all, as a body, hired this man standing before us as we, as the next councils sometime down the road from this young fellow gets old enough and he decides not to do anymore.
Thank you.
But I think with that in mind, I would be fine sending the president for counsel that the chief judge does what he, does exactly what he said, he goes through, he weeds him out, and, and I think Councilman Rigadelli's got his resume, he's great, but you, you can't really judge somebody from a piece of paper. The person who's going to be working with them every day, in this case, chief judge, knows what they want, what they want for the coherence and, and everything of the, of the office. So I would say, let's do that. Let him weed it out, make his recommendation. As we did, we interview, Mark sets it up, city manager sets it up. If we like him, boom, done. If there's something that just doesn't quite seem right to any of us, you know, we, we can say, no, let's, let's look at number two, or go back to judge and say, let's, let's try it again. But, but I'm, I'm fine if he, you know, as the chief judge says, this is the person I want, let's talk to him, and if we, you know, we like him, we agree, boom, it's done. And then councils can follow that.
I, I like that.
I, I like that.
Yeah, I, I like that as well.
Why not? Okay. Let's, let's, well, do we need to bring that forward, or Judge, are you okay with this?
One, two.
Yes. Thank you.
Mayor and council, I, I think we're fine with general direction on this one, so we'll, we'll go forward with that, and we'll advise the council on the process. The judge and I will work together to make sure that y'all are informed.
As long as we can have some kind of a back and forth so that we do understand what the general direction is going to be.
I have, and I just to comment, I have, I believe that, Judge, you've been very open and very transparent with us right from the time of your appointment, so I have no doubt that you're going to continue. However, just like another council member I pointed out, we, we may not have two attorneys on council every single session that we are. So I want to make sure that there is a consistency that's put in place so that regardless of what happened, you know, it will always, this will become a routine and it won't get changed, you know, halfway down the road.
And honestly, it has nothing to do with the presence of any attorneys in here, to me. I think you know me well enough. That it, it does not.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move item three and four to a future preliminary open meeting due to time restraints. So we're going to move to consent and regular agendas. Any item?
We had a member of the public request that item I.
Okay. All right. And, okay, thank you. Next item, items for future agendas and discussion. Councilman Williams.
Mayor, for the first meeting in April, I'd like to put it on the agenda for us to look at an actual ordinance restricting short-term rentals. That should give us enough lead time to look at how it needs to be crafted, but the short-term rental concerns were first, first put on my radar in 2019 with a murder at a short-term rental. We've been hearing about it and gathering data, researching for more than three years since, and we've just had another shooting, which I suspect many of the folks here come here to speak on, and I, I'd like to move forward with some actual consideration.
I'll suck at that.
Counsel, just for clarification, can you be more specific on what you're looking for on?
Can we do that tomorrow?
Okay.
Can we do that at the next meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, we can have to.
Put it on the next meeting to, for preliminary.
To give a direction?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Take your recess and return at seven o'clock.
I now declare that the Plano City Council has reconvened in an open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Pastor Ashish Matthew with Commission Church and the Pledge of Allegiance and Texas Pledge led by Plano Fire Rescue Post 215. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Father God, we are so grateful and thankful for this beautiful evening, this beautiful day that you've blessed us with. Lord, I am grateful for this country and the opportunity of free speech where we can openly pray for our leaders, our cities, and this beautiful country that we live in. Lord, we're instructed to pray for kings and all those at authority that we may live peacefully in this land in quiet lives and godliness and holiness. So today, Lord, as I'm given this task to bring the invocation to this city council, we lift up our local leaders today. I thank you, Lord, for the authority of the local leaders and the officials who manage the majority of our daily lives. Today, I pray for our mayors, our city council members, our city commissioners, our police chiefs, our city manager today, our judges, and all those who serve in our local communities, God. I pray for Mayor John Muns. I thank you for his leadership and his wisdom over the years, and I pray that you will continue to lead him and guide him. I pray for Mayor Protam Casey Prince, Deputy Mayor Protam Maria Too, council members Anthony Riccadelli, Rick Grady, Shelby Williams, Julie Homer, and Rick Smith. I pray, God, especially for City Manager Mark Ezerson and his amazing team of people that make the wheels of this city turn day after day. I thank you, Lord, for the decision-making of this amazing council that meets regularly to serve this city and the citizens of this city. Lord, I thank you for our municipal court judges as well. I thank you for Police Chief Ed Drain and his legion of amazing police officers that protect our city. And, Lord, I pray that you will strengthen them with wisdom. You will give them the grace for the heavy burdens that they carry. We pray, God, that you will give them the ability to manage their teams and projects with love. I pray that you will keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned towards your face as they work in the best interests of the people that they are called to serve. I pray, God, that they will never forget they are servant leaders. I pray, God, that you will give every leader the strength so they do not grow weary in their leadership role. Father, the tasks that may seem overwhelming and exhausting, I pray that every leader will recognize that they are assigned by you to do your will in this city. Therefore, I know, God, at the right time that you will help them, you will enable them. I pray, God, that you will be with them. I pray for all the city council members that are running for reelection or, Lord, I just pray, God, you will give them grace, you will give them the strength through this period to serve the city as well as to be able to manage their campaigns. Thank you, Lord. I pray for divine strength for every leader, and I pray, God, that they will not rely on themselves but rely on you. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please say standing for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Texas Pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Be seated.
Hey, guys. How are you? Don't want to take a picture. Come on up here. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
So we have a couple of presentations. Our first one's the Salvation Army of North Texas presenting the results of the 2022 Red Kettle Challenge. I'd like to call forward Marco Abaca, Salvation Army of Plano, Lila Baca, Salvation Army of Plano, and Mary Freeman, Salvation Army.
So, good evening. My name is Lieutenant Marco Sabaca. I'm with the Salvation Army of Plano, as he just mentioned. Here with me is my Community Relations Director, Mary Freeman, of the North Texas Area Command for Denton and Collin Counties. Mayor, we came today, we want to thank you and the city leaders for participating in our 2022 Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge that helped, you know, raise the much-needed funds in the Plano area. Your leadership inspired your city council, as well as the Lucas Mayor, Mayor Oak, to also participate in the 2022 Mayor's Red Kettle Challenge. So today, we are here, and we are pleased to present you with a certificate of appreciation, one for you and one for each one of your city council members for helping, you know, joining the challenge in helping us raise the much-needed funds for the Salvation Army's year-round programs that help addressing families' instability caused by homelessness and poverty and addiction in the Plano area. So we are happy to report yours and the city council's very successful efforts. City Council Member Anthony Riccadelli ranked first in total dollars raised. Eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-one cents from two donors. Thank you very much, Anthony. City Council Member Rick Smith. Yes, City Council Member Rick Smith ranked second in total dollars raised, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Thank you very much, Rick. We appreciate you very much. City Council Member Julie Homer ranked first in total number of donors, eleven donors to raise seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. Thank you very much. For a total of three thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-seven cents from the Plano Mayor and City Council. Thank you very much to all of you. And one more thing I would like to add that's the most important. Because of your efforts, we owe you a debt of gratitude because it inspired the recruitment of fourteen volunteers and twenty more donors to raise a total of three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-four cents in donations. So we thank you very much, Mayor, City Council, for helping your neighbors in need.
Thank you so much. Let's give the Salvation Army a hand.
Thank you, guys.
Next, the Collin County Master Gardeners Association is celebrating Ask a Gardener Month in March. I'd like to call forward Linda Wilcox, the Master Gardener Project Lead, Meg Bellinger, Master Gardener Project Lead, Mary Ann White, co-leader, and City of Plano employees who are master gardeners. I'd want to know who that is, too, because I have some work for y'all to do. So it's a real thrill and a great opportunity to read and present this proclamation. Whereas the volunteer membership of the Collin County Master Gardeners Association, affiliated with Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service of the Texas A&amp;M University System, has served the City of Plano residents since 1997. And whereas the mission of the Collin County Master Gardeners Association is to assist and support the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Horticultural Agent in providing our community with the research-based information on sustainable horticultural practices, environmental stewardship. Whereas the Collin County Master Gardeners Association provides science-based horticultural information at no charge to the public through their Ask the Master Gardener booth, their information center, their garden caretaking services at Heritage Farmstead Museum, the Speakers Bureau, and support for the Plano Waterwise Landscape Tours, the Garden Show, and many other resources that can be accessed from their website, as well as through their many community-based projects and volunteer services. Now, therefore, I, John B. Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, Texas, on behalf of the city council and citizens of Plano, do hereby proclaim March of 2023 as Ask a Master Gardener Month in the City of Plano. And I do thereby encourage all citizens to support and utilize the horticultural services and ongoing educational programs provided by the Collin County Master Gardeners Association. Congratulations, ladies.
Come on over here, we'll take a picture. Come on this way. All right.
Okay, I think it's time to move on to comments of public interest.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with thirty total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have several speakers this evening. The first one is Jeremiah Smith. He had signed up to speak on Zoom. He's not there. It's Mr. Smith in the audience. Okay, we will move on to Catherine Parker.
City Council Members, Mayor Muns, I'm Catherine Qualiana Parker. My husband and I have lived in Plano for eight years. I do not want to be here today. None of us in the Texas Neighborhood Coalition wants to be here. We have been talking to you for nearly a year about short-term rentals. We keep telling you that on any given day, something terrible can and will happen at one of the hundreds of short-term rentals in our neighborhood. Well, that day has come. Our neighbors in Oakwood Glen, as you will hear tonight, were traumatized this weekend by witnessing multiple rounds of gunfire outside of a short-term rental. Here's what that sounds like. It's shocking, isn't it? Enough is enough. On behalf of the Plano Chapter of the Texas Neighborhood Coalition, we are demanding an immediate end to short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods. Now.
The next speaker is Teri Frazier, who will be followed by Georgia Landauer.
Hello, my name is Teri Frazier, and, forgive me, I'm nervous with public speaking. I've lived in Plano about ten years, and I live in a quiet neighborhood. And it's been quiet until last fall, when I became next-door neighbors with a short-term rental. And as many of you now know, there was a terrifying incident over the weekend. But I thought, and many people are going to speak to that tonight, but I thought I might take a moment and speak about what it's like even before we got to this point. So living next door to a short-term rental is like living in a bar district. There are parties very often, and these partygoers line our streets with their cars, block our mailboxes, prohibit mail delivery. They leave, come and go at all hours of the night. The parties that don't require police assistance do still cause noise, no sleep. Living next door, partygoers leave the short-term rental to go to their cars parked down the street, and as they do so, they pause. And I have watched out the window as these partygoers have stopped to, once to vomit in my yard, and once a man paused, unzipped his pants, and urinated in my yard. And this was before things got bad, and this is not something that someone living in a residential area should have to deal with. I feel like I live next to a bar, and now with the events of this weekend, I'm terrified because aside from the trash in my yard, the cigarettes, the wine bottles, the noise, now we're dealing with gunfire. And when this happened, we did not know, is there going to be more gunfire? What is going to happen? People were cowering in their houses? I live in a quiet residential neighborhood, and so I am asking you to ban short-term rentals because we should not have to feel like we live next to a bar, and we should not have to be ducking for cover at two o'clock in the morning when gunfire breaks out. Thank you for listening.
Thank you to the council members and to Mayor John Muns for letting us be here. I live in the neighborhood where, I'm Georgia Landauer, I live in the neighborhood where this occurred. The party members were in cars and hanging out of cars and in our front yard late Saturday night and early Sunday morning. They were cursing. They were running back and forth. I stepped outside at one point and asked them what was going on, and I got cursed at, so I went back in my house. And I called the police at 12:30 a.m. The police did come by, but apparently didn't see anything that they could do anything about at that time. At about 1:30, things escalated again and were getting even worse. There was a lot of arguing, even more cursing, more people running up and down the street. And the party house, as I now call it, is two houses away from me. Apparently, they were yelling back and forth at each other and deciding if they were going to leave and go somewhere else. And before I knew it, there were the multiple gunshots going on that you heard on the recording. I hit the floor as fast as I could and yelled at my husband to do the same. It's something I never thought I would have to do in my house that I've lived in since 1998. It's been a very safe neighborhood, a very calming place to live in. And it's not fair that we should have to live like that. I don't feel safe in my house anymore. And when I woke up the next day and found out my neighbor had a bullet through her home, I'm actually shocked that there weren't more. I'm shocked that nobody was really injured or killed. When the shots went off, several of the cars of people took off at the same time. There were people running on the side of my house, since I live on the corner, and then people running down the front. The police department did respond very quickly. There were police on the corner of my house and police in front of my house. They were risking their lives to come and respond to these people that had guns themselves. And they stopped and were trying to arrest some of these people. Please stop the short-term rentals that have turned into party houses and dangerous places for us to live and turn our neighborhood into a safe place to live. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Zoe Sanchez-Reveal, followed by Chris Brackman.
City Council Members, Mayor Muns. My name is Zoe Sanchez, and my husband and I and our three-year-old daughter live in Plano, Texas, since August of last year. Early Sunday morning, I woke up to the sounds of gunshots hitting my house. My immediate reaction was to reach over to my daughter, who was sleeping soundly, and make sure that she was safe. I turned to my husband and said, "Those are gunshots." I immediately texted my neighbors to make sure that they were safe and to see what was happening. My neighbor, Tim, who is the husband of Ms. Georgia, texted me back saying that he called 911 and to stay away from the windows. My body was pumping adrenaline at an unimaginable rate. When I heard the sirens, I peered out the window of my master bedroom but decided to retreat back into the safety of my daughter's room. In an attempt to evade the crippling anxiety and fear that was keeping us awake and from sleeping, all of us, all the neighbors, kept texting each other. In the morning, my husband's plan was to let me sleep, but he woke me up and said, "I need you to get up." And in my docs and bathrobe glasses and my hair in a matted mess, I walked towards the front door to see all my neighbors gathered in front of the window of my daughter's playroom, which... You can see there. My husband raised his finger, and I saw the large bullet hole that had penetrated over our double-pane window that was right above my daughter's daybed. And then he pointed to the wall where my daughter's play kitchen and mirror were standing with a bullet hole above that, that penetrated that wall and ricocheted, hitting my shutter blinds and then hitting my dining room wall. I was in a complete daze yesterday. How is it possible that my home, my sanctuary, was violated by a stray bullet? I then thought, and thank God, we were in a different part of the house, and I was... And as my mind began to think, had my daughter been playing there, had we been sleeping there with her, as we often do, or if my husband would have been reading a book by the dining room or cleaning out the cat litter, what would have happened? My miracle baby, my perfect life, could have been taken from me in a split second. There were at least twenty rounds, and more than twenty instances where my life could have completely changed. I spent all of today praying and thanking the guardian angels and God that kept us safe. Coming to learn that the gunfire stemmed from an out-of-control party at the short-term rental began the anger, I'm sorry, I'm going to keep going. I'm sorry, I'm going to keep going. Short-term rentals do not belong in a tight-knit family community. We don't know what type of people come into those party houses now that we have named.
Hello, Mayor.
And I don't even live next to the party house. I live around three doors down to the left.
Thank you for allowing the neighborhood that I live in to speak with you, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Chris Brockman.
Yesterday night, I thought I did something that I thought I would never have to do
I have lived in that neighborhood for 24 years with my wife, Debbie, are you there?
as a mother of a three-year-old. I told my baby girl, Luna, I said, "If mommy or daddy ever say drop to the floor, we get
And my neighbors. Raise your hand if you're my neighbor. I tell you something I learned since yesterday, is that having a gunshot, a shootout in your
down like this." We laid down with our hands and feet apart, flat, facing each other.
neighborhood has a galvanizing effect on your neighbors. You know who they are. We pull together rapidly.
And then I said, "And when it's okay to get up, we get up, and then we will have a tickle
In the 24 years that I've lived in that neighborhood, six doors away from where the crimes occurred,
fight." And she laughed. I still couldn't sleep last night, and I'm scared of what the weekend might bring in
I've also been an engineer for 39 years in the computer chip industry.
that house. I want to close off that part of the house so we can be safe.
I've worked on radars, satellites, radios, computer chips for cars, computer chips for
I came to you as a member of the community to ask for an end to short-term rentals, to
cell phones.
help me feel safe in my own home again.
And in that job, we work very hard to drive risk down.
Please put yourself in my situation.
Because if a computer chip fails in a car or a satellite, it has very dramatic impact.
It could have been your daughter, your son, your sister, your mother. It could have been you. So let's prevent that from happening.
So, one of the things that engineers do is they assess risk.
Thanks.
And in cars, the standard of performance is that a car's computer chip should have less than one failure per million computer chips. And they're actually driving that to one failure per billion computer chips. And when a failure happens, the engineers work to find ways around it, alternative paths, to keep the damage from going on. Self-driving computer chips have ways to repair themselves. But we assess risk and we look for alternatives. Well, we have a problem here. We have a short-term rental problem in the city of Plano, and we need to look for alternatives. But as we address this issue, let's look at where short-term rentals are appropriate. I say it's appropriate in Orlando, where there's Disney World. I say it's appropriate in Branson, where there's those music shows. I say short-term rentals are appropriate in Corpus Christi for people to go to the beach. There's a place to go, an attraction. Well, in Plano, the attraction becomes the home. Oh, let's go to Big Home. The home that was, you know, the victim of this is a large home, probably 3,200 square feet. That becomes the attraction. And so it attracts partiers, people that want to have a good time. The wrong kind of good time, as we found out. So, I would say, as we look at alternatives, we could say to those that own investment properties in Plano that are looking for a place, let them put in long-term renters. Is that...
20 seconds.
...that's an alternative that would work. They can get return on their investment, and that's a solution. For people that come from out of our area that need a place to stay, well, they could stay at a hotel. Or if they want to have a party, they could rent a room at a hotel or a bar. So there are alternatives. So we, as a group, do not need this kind of risk in our community. And we would urge that you find a way, if it's not possible to ban outright, that to put regulations in place to keep this kind of damaging implication out of our neighborhoods. So, thank you for your time, and please find a solution for us. Thank you.
The next speaker is Lauren Dykes, followed by John Green.
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Lauren Dykes, and I've been a Plano resident since 2018. I know that's not as much as some of the people represented that have spoken tonight, but I'm no stranger to Plano, as my dad was a Plano police officer for 36 years. My husband and I have two small kiddos, and they often play outside with our neighbors. And they scooter up and down the streets of many of the faces that are represented here tonight as well. My request to you is simple, end short-term rentals now. My reason is very clear as well. Allow myself and my family to feel safe in our home. MLK said, "A man dies when he refuses to stand up for that which is right. A man dies when he refuses to stand up for justice. A man dies when he refuses to take a stand for that which is true." So here we are, standing in front of you tonight, boldly asking, what else has to happen? What else has to happen on your watch in our city for change to occur? The time is now, end short-term rentals. Thank you.
Council member and Mayor Munds, thank you for letting us speak tonight. My name is John Green. I've lived in Plano for 27 years, over 27 years. I actually first moved here in 1991 with my parents in a house that they still own, or my mom does. My dad passed away recently. So I'm very familiar with Plano. I've spent a lot of my life here. Within the last six months, the house across the street from us has turned, has been turned into a short-term rental. A few months ago, there was a party thrown at that house that got out of hand. The police had to show up. The out of hand was there were, I think the number was estimated at three dozen people in this house having a party. It was also out of hand because of the noise level, not only the music that they were playing, but yelling, screaming, and as Georgia mentioned earlier, same thing happened this past weekend, a lot of foul language. This past weekend, another party was held in the same house, but this time, it moved from being a nuisance, which is what the last one was, because of the noise. At approximately 1:45, I was awakened by multiple bursts of gunfire. Honestly, I don't know, after talking to my neighbors, how I slept through the first part of the evening, but I was woken by the gunfire, and I knew right away what it was. And as you can see, I'm a big guy. I jumped out of my bed, literally jumped out of my bed. After reviewing the, my neighbor's ring video, I confirmed my suspicion that somebody emptied probably two full magazines and one gun, and part of a magazine and another gun. So it wasn't just a couple of random shots. There was right at 30 shots, all in 21 seconds. That was the video you watched just a little while ago. The police seemed to respond quickly, and they promptly started trying to get everyone under control. Initially, the officers I could see out in front of my house, which was at one point about 12 officers that I could actually see, they had, initially, they all had their weapons drawn. Some of them had rifles, some of them had handguns. But they were, they knew they were in an intense situation. Eventually, they did get enough control where they started relaxing, and at that point, I went out and stood on my front porch. I let the officers do what they needed to do. And at one point, one of them came over.
Finish your thought.
Hopefully, hopefully, none of you have one of these short-term rentals near your home. But just keep in mind, just like us, that could change. Six months ago, we didn't have one. Now we do, and we have a problem. So I really hope that you can help facilitate some changes to eliminate this problem in our neighborhood and across the whole entire city. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us this evening, Mayor Munds and city council members. So, so far, folks have talked about their different perspectives of this party. I was awakened about 1:45 a.m. by somebody pounding on my front door. I live cat-a-corner from the party house, as we now call it. As I peered through my bedroom blinds, which by the way, faced the street, to see what was happening, I heard loud, angry voices. I saw two vehicles out there, kids piling in, people yelling at each other, running all over. I looked out my door. There was nobody there, so I don't know if somebody was in distress. I have no idea what happened to that person or what was going on with them. I waited about 10 minutes after those vehicles squealed down the street, you know, screeched down the street. And my dog needed to go out in the back, so I thought, well, it's probably safe, because this time, I thought whatever it was, was over. I just opened the back door and heard the gunfire. So we immediately decided not to go out, that we'd figure something else out. By this time, police lights were flashing in the front of my house, and officers were out there bringing people out of the party house. There were numerous individuals out there. I called my son, who came over from Allen, to be with me during this, because I'm alone. My son witnessed the police bringing the individuals out, lining them up in front, breathalyzer tests. This was like a movie, not like what you think your life is like. It was only later in the morning, after the police had gone, that we found out there had been numerous shots fired in the neighborhood, resulting in a shot through the window of my young neighbors. There was no regard for those of us who make this our home, who have grown to love the peace and tranquility of a quiet Plano neighborhood. This is my retirement home. I do not plan to leave. I also do not plan to stay silent or allow our homes to be subject to whoever wants to throw a party of any kind. And I do not have any intention of dealing with this type of thing on a long-term basis, so, you know, I will be vocal. I really appreciate your time and consideration, because these are folks who come for one night, party. They don't care about the aftermath. They don't care what happens to the rest of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas, Dolly, hold on just a second. Let me get, Chief, would you mind kind of just giving us an update on what you know about this incident?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Just a quick update. The house where the shooting occurred, it is on both Verbo and Airbnb platforms. We made contact with those platforms, and both of them have temporarily suspended this particular residence until they conduct their own investigation to see what happened from their perspective. There were, no one was injured during this particular incident that we have been made aware of. And this is, it is an ongoing investigation. I can tell you, though, that we did make two arrests related to this, and we are looking, continue to investigate to look for other suspects.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I'm so glad to have y'all have me tonight. And what I would like to just ask briefly is an update on when I came before you before, that $1.9 million that was supposed to be spent on homeless prevention. I would really like to know if it has been spent, what nonprofit received it, and any progress that there might be that you can, you can share that with the public. Also, in some recent months, I've been working with a couple of elderly residents here, and they have been applying for home rehabs. And the application process is so convoluted that it is so difficult. Some of them, well, most of them, behave either after a long process of anywhere from six months to a year, have just threw up their hands and said, "I don't want it." Or the neighborhood services will come back and tell them that they don't qualify because they have a live-in assistant with them. If they're elderly, one lady, she has seizures, she has someone living with her, she's going to be disqualified because that person is living with her. I am asking that the, that you as a council will get together with neighborhood services, go over the application process to find ways where we can help those that are most needing this. I've talked to John and Mark extensively about this, but I just want to get some council support behind it so that we can get those homes and those people safe in their homes. One lady has black mold in her house, and she's, she's had a stroke, and this is the one that I'm sure is going to be denied because she has a live-in with her. And just go over the application process, look at it, and see how many of the homes that have put in applications have received it, how many have not, and how many have just given up. Because there are some people that just threw up their hands and said, "I don't, I can't, I can't do this anymore." So I'm just asking for those residents, if you will just take a look at that process and maybe define it or refine it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dolly. For those of you that weren't here for the preliminary open meeting, we did agendize the short-term rental for the first meeting in April, and so we will update all of you on where we're at and what we need to do moving forward. So I just wanted you to know, we, we're on it, and we're working very diligently to come up with a solution that everyone is satisfied with. So I just want you to know, we're very sorry about what happened last weekend, and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that never happens again. Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There were two additional items, actually. In light of this, I also have an additional request in advance of our next meeting. Several times in the past, when we've been shown the number of calls for service to known short-term rentals, I've asked if we can get that compared to calls for service for other property types. And I understand we have not historically been able to parse our data out that way. So what I'd like to ask for is in advance of our next meeting, where we'll define the parameters of what we want to come back regarding short-term rental restrictions at the subsequent meeting, I'd like updated stats on calls for service by year for the past four years at what we know were short-term rentals versus all calls for service in residential areas. I know we can't break it out by property type or specific address. We can do enough rough math to get a, to get a barometer. on where we're at and what we need to do moving forward. So I just wanted you to know, we, we're on it, and we're working very diligently to, to come up with a solution that everyone is satisfied with. So I just want you to know, we're very sorry about what happened last weekend, and we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that never happens again. Oh, sorry, Shelby. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There were two additional items, actually. In light of this, I also have an additional request in advance of our next meeting. Several times in the past, when we've been shown the number of calls for service to known short-term rentals, I've asked if we can get that compared to calls for service for other property types. And I understand we have not historically been able to parse our data out that way. So what I'd like to ask for is, in advance of our next meeting, where we'll define the parameters of what we want to come back regarding short-term rental restrictions at the subsequent meeting, I'd like updated stats on calls for service by year for the past four years at what we know were short-term rentals versus all calls for service in residential areas. I know we can't break it out by property type or specific address. We can do enough rough math to get a, to get a barometer.
And I'll second that request.
And that's, again, by year for the past four years, in advance of our next meeting.
Go ahead and finish.
Hold on, Council. So we have, and this is comments of public interest, so I'm trying to make sure that I'm staying factual. I'll get back with you on that specific request and the timeline associated with it.
Okay, thank you. So the, the actual things I intended to say here are, number one, Thursday marks the 187th anniversary of Texas Independence Day. I should say, it commemorates Texas Independence Day. Last year, for the first time, we held our, what was to become an annual Texas Forever Fest. So even though Texas Independence Day is on Thursday, our Texas Forever Fest will be on Saturday, March 25th, at Haggard Park. It'll be our second one. The first one last year, even though it was a fair ways out from Texas Independence Day itself, was a big success. I'd like everybody to know about it. We are very proud of our Texas heritage and history, and it is completely full of the Texas Forever Fest, based on last year. So I invite everybody to come out. Second, totally different matter, Texans for Fiscal Responsibility recently published their list of what they term sinkhole cities in, in Texas. There were a bunch of them, but there were three what they termed sunshine cities for responsible fiscal management. Plano topped the list, I'm very proud to say, due to the diligence of our staff in, in handling our money very wisely. And it's worth mentioning that in our, the audit process we go through every year, not only is Plano, I think, the second city in the entire country to have everything ready for the audit process, but we always have everything buttoned up. So I just want to recognize our city staff for doing an outstanding job in making Plano one of only three sunshine cities and one topping the list. Thank you.[732.38][732.38](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd like, in lieu of comments that were made at public interest, I realize that we have a meeting that's coming up that's going to be discussing the comments of housing and urban development and some aspects of housing and urban development. I'd like that discussion to include some of the rules around live-in individuals with housing and urban development, because I believe that, that the rules have different definitions as to what live-in income would be versus a non-live income. In essence, a caretaker's income not, or not being counted as part of the total income of the household versus someone that's a live-in. And I'd like to get a clearer definition on that aspect.
I'll second that. I take it back.[786.88][786.88](LAUGHTER).
Well, not only am I going to second, I think probably, I think, Mark, you've talked about bringing neighborhood services into the picture and tried to work out some sort of solution. I'd like to see that we work together on this. So please include neighborhood services in, in some type of update and explanation with regard to how we go about defining this.
Council, y'all are expanding agenda items pretty significantly here. We have gone from a HUD discussion to expanding. Now we're having neighborhood services. I'm going to ask that, after this meeting, that each of you get with me on your list of items to bring back to council, and we will make sure that we get those through our process of requests. The comments of public interest, as we've talked about, are intended to be factual in the way that we're going about this. So I want to make sure that we're keeping the intent of our meeting and our comments focused where our intent has always been. So I'll be getting with each of you after this meeting on your requests.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, except for item I, is an Indian.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item I. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Item I.
Item I. Consideration to authorize the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with Dallas Area Rapid Transit, allowing Plano participating in funding for public transportation improvements and providing an effective date.
Mayor and Council, I've spoken with a number of you, and we've had a discussion with DART with regard to an interlocal agreement. This interlocal agreement was drafted by DART for consideration by the city. As a way of background, we did submit a red-line version to DART that included changes from a number of cities, including Plano, that we thought were in the city's interest. Those red-line suggestions were rejected by DART. So this is the version of the interlocal agreement that DART is willing to accept. With that, the potential for just over $28 million worth of funding is available back to the city for transportation-related and transit-related projects.
Think we have a speaker?
We do. It is Cara Mendelson.
Honorary speaker. Welcome, Cara.
Thank you. I'm actually speaking on my own accord, not for the city. But I do want to thank you for your service. I'll just say, it's harder than it looks, right? So I am talking about the interlocal agreement with DART and the return of your taxpayer's sales tax to you. And the question for all of this, that I have asked, is who is setting the terms of this ILA? You're a member of the organization of DART, and they are meant to serve your and your residents' transit needs, not to dictate the terms to you, but to collaborate with you for a win-win. To me, it's outrageous that DART would reject the advice of the city attorneys for all the member cities and tell you exactly what must happen. The most egregious of the terms, in my opinion, are saying things like, anything that's not federally required, they can pull back your money. In your case, you have betterment walls, you added grade separation, station upgrades, you reopened the FEIS, which slowed down the process. All of those make it subject to those dollars being returned to DART, not to you. DART told you earlier tonight that you're in good standing. That's great. But did they say current, past? Because the contract says past, current, and future projects. The question is, which was asked by Councilmember Prince, what does it mean to be in good standing? That was part of your red line and is not answered. You know that they're proposing to give you 10% of the project cost upfront. So if you do a project for $5 million, let's just say $1 million, you're going to get $100,000. What if you lose that good standing? How are you going to pay that other $900,000? And it's a lot more than that. Who decides the good standing? They do. They're the judge, and they're the jury. We need an independent third party that can make that determination. DART loves to talk about how Dallas has slowed down their project. When investigated by the COG, it was rated not true. Governance says you must see the details of this deal. It's a lot of money. And while you have a very nice, wonderful city manager, this deserves daylight for your residents. These projects should be part of the, should not be part of the consideration of ongoing construction. This return of sales tax is an independent issue, and I would suggest to you that the COG would be a very good third party to administer this money and make sure that everybody stays on track. With that, there's one other item that DART said to you tonight that I would question. When they told you that almost half the cities have approved it, they didn't approve the ILA. They approved the exact item you have, which is to empower their city manager to continue negotiating. Thank you.
So this is, this is an item we, we, it kind of appears that it's one, one or the other, but we certainly can table this and, and do further work to, to see whether or not we can, we can get to a better solution. So I'm, I'm just telling you, it's, it's not, you know, one or the other. Go ahead, Councilman Brady.
I want to thank Councilman Williams for working on this project deeply. But I will also say, from the North Central Texas Council of Governments, and as a member of it, and not speaking for the organization, the Council of Governments and the Regional Transportation Council put themselves way out in order to help fund the decision of returning dollars back to the city. And so it was a major step for all of the 45 members sitting around the horseshoe to make a decision to say, "We are going to add additional funds," so that the cities would get their fair share back. I would think, and it is my opinion, but I would think, and I will certainly mention it at the Regional Transportation Council, that this kind of contract coming back is a really unfair stance by the Dallas Area Rapid Transit towards a member city, in that they are basically saying, "We will give you the money for certain projects, and if we don't like what you're doing, we're going to pull it back. And if you don't do it in a timely fashion, we're going to pull it back." This is not a partnership. This is a dictatorship, in my opinion. And I think the Regional Transportation Council and many of the members would agree that that is not the type of contract that we talk about as far as partnership is concerned. So I think we still need to do a lot of work on it. I believe that we went into it in all good faith with a red-lined addition that many of the large cities agreed with that are, are significant contributors to this. I asked the city manager how much we have contributed to DART since the beginning of time. It was well over $1.6 billion that we have contributed to them. If I was a capital investor putting $1.6 billion into a project, and somebody said, "I, I, I don't have to return your funds, and if I return your funds and I don't like what you use it for, I can take it back," I would never have made the investment. So I think that, in my opinion, this item needs more, more discussion, and I'm willing to make the motion to table this item until we have a further discussion.
Yep. Well, you, you go first, Shelby. You've spearheaded this.
Councilman Williams, go ahead. Sorry. Well, before we have a, a vote to table, the, the actual resolution which we'd be voting on has two provisions. One, which is to authorize the city manager to continue negotiating, which he's already been doing. The first of which is to execute this ILA. I'm not at all comfortable with authorizing the execution of this ILA as written, because it, it very much is the tail wagging the dog. The, the DART member cities are not subordinate to the DART organization. It's the other way around. And to be told that we can use what is our money according to their dictates, I'm not at all comfortable with. So I, I'm not sure that I'd even be comfortable tabling this because of the provision to execute this specific ILA. I have full faith in our city manager to continue negotiating, but I would want, not want to even, to authorize or even probably table entertaining execution of this ILA.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
So I want to put it in simple terms, because from the time that I came on council, I was told that one cent of our sales tax goes to DART, and we only get two cents. So out of the two cents, we give one cent to DART, and then we're left with one cent. And thank you for, our colleague from our neighbor city, for coming here and sharing your thoughts, because frankly, I've always been very puzzled, where does that one cent go? And, and how is it spent? Are we, are they accountable? Do we get any type of transparency as to where the money is spent and how it is being used? And today, we're told that we're still waiting, they're still calculating, they're still working on it. And it's been four years, right, Anthony? And so I, I'm, even at the last council meeting in which we were told that there is surplus, and yet we don't get to decide what happens to the surplus money that DART has, it's really, they tell us if it's okay. So, I mean, it's our tax dollars, our city, our residents' hard-work funds that are putting into a project that they believed in. And yet, at this point, I feel like we are, if we're not doing our job, if we are not continuing to monitor the progress of this, and I, in this case, I agree with Shelby, that I, I just think that it needs to be moved to deny.
Legal question. I know we have an active motion, but if we did deny it, Paige, does that in any way prohibit a new resolution coming back to authorize the city manager to execute an ILA which we do approve?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait one second. We haven't passed the red-line version already, so that's still in place.
So Mayor and Council, we, we actually passed a red-line, the red-line version with council at, I believe it was the last meeting. So that is what is currently in place, is the red-line version. This would then take the place of that red-line version if it's passed.
Councilman Rick Adeli.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with the points that have been made. I also reached out to City Manager Israelson about this upon reading this ILA, because there, there are things in there that go beyond those relating to the expenditure of these funds. You know, we always expect when we receive funds that there will be conditions related to the expenditure of the funds, but there are other conditions in there that go beyond those that are relevant to the expenditure of these funds that would, you know, that would obligate the city in, in various ways. And, you know, I think we have a history of cooperating with DART. I, I don't understand why this language is necessary. You know, I wish that the DART representatives were still here to have that conversation, why they view this language as being necessary. I'm fine with a denial or a tabling. I, I have to say, I, I'm leaning toward a tabling, because I, I just, I think that that sends a signal that we are trying to continue negotiations. I know from a legal perspective, a denial, you know, does not foreclose the continuance of negotiations, but I, I just think, you know, from the perspective that we're, we're still trying to stay at the table, we're trying to work with DART, you know, we, we want them to take into account what the member cities that obviously fund DART have to say about this, and, and to have a fairer ILA. You know, I, I think, though, that, that we send that signal that we want to continue negotiating by tabling. So I will second the motion to table. That being said, you know, I, I don't think any of us have, from, or at least those who have spoken, you know, have an intention of voting to approve this exact ILA that's on the agenda tonight, because it contains terms that are, that are frankly, a bit draconian regarding these funds. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I know you don't have a lot to do, so I, I'd like to give you one more thing to ask, because I, I've been agreeing. I, I think we should table this. I don't, I don't think we should just cut it off, but let's table it and, and let you keep working on it. But what I'd like for you to look at, and maybe Paige just, okay, no, we can't do that, is, let's, have we looked at the agreement that we all signed eons ago with DART, the little, all the little fine prints and whereas and where tos, to see is DART in compliance with the agreement that they gave to us? And if not, let's do something about it.
So, Councilman, the, the vote of the citizens of Plano happened in the early '80s.
In the eons ago, yeah.
Yes, sir. So have we, have we done an audit of that? No, I'm not aware of, of an audit that we've actually, actually done for that, but I think that the direction that I'm hearing or consensus is to keep working in whether it's denied or, or tabled. I understand fully that I'm not to sign this version of things. That, that part seems very clear from council.
All right. I have a motion, a second, to...
You did not have a second.
Yes, we did. Anthony, I have a motion, a second, to table item I. Huh?
It was Grady.
Grady and Anthony. Okay. Okay, sorry. All right. I'm listening. I have a motion and a second to table item I. Motion passes six to to table. Thank you very much. Items for individual consideration.
Public hearing items. Applicants are limited to 15 minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited to 30 total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. Presiding officer will permit public comment and items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to accept and approve a service and assessment plan and assessment role for the downtown Plano Public Improvement District, making a finding of special benefit to the property in the district, levying assessments against property within the district, and establishing a lien on such property, providing for the method of assessment and the payment of assessments in accordance with chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code as amended, providing penalties and interest on delinquent assessments, providing for severability, and resolving matters incident and relative thereto, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, Council. Peter Braster, Director of Special Projects. This is the second action you've taken on this year. The first one was when you actually approved the formation of the Pid back in January. What this action does is two things. One, we're going to have a public hearing, and if we have any speakers, and then you'll consider an ordinance that adopts a service and assessment plan, which is basically the budget for the Pid for the upcoming year, and then a levy to fund that budget. You will do this every year for the next 10 years. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the Pid.
Thank you. Mayor Proto.
Yes, so the $126,000 budget, that's not very big, right?
That's correct.
It's not going to go very far. $40,000 for marketing is going to hardly do anything. So the city of Plano, from what I can, we have 12 lots in the pit, is that right?
That's right. And our, yes, go ahead.
And so, and we're contributing $50,000.
That's right.
Versus being taxed individually for each 12, of the 12.
Correct.
But as long as I can remember from being on the council, it's always been 50,000.
That's correct.
Do we think, we foresee at some time that we're going to have to increase that? I mean, just with inflation, I mean, I don't, has it ever been increased, or have we always come in at 50,000?
It has not been increased, but there are things, a few things have changed over the past several months, one of which is we've hired a person to be the downtown Plano manager. So now we have someone who sort of augments the services of the Pid, probably does more than they did. So we have somebody sort of in an economic development role, that's Michelle Hawkins. I think you probably all know her. So we're doing that. In addition to that, we have an additional 50,000 in this year's budget to help with things in downtown. And we didn't want to do it, we thought it would be wise to split it between us doing things with Michelle and then the Pid. So that's the 100,000 that is budgeted for this year. So it doesn't really answer your question, which is, have we ever increased it? No, it's always been 50, but we have increased the budget to spend, and we would do that this way. We think it's wise to do it this way.
We have the speakers?
We do. We have one speaker, Buzz Dykman. Okay. No other speakers.
That's, all right, I'll close the public hearing, find the comments of the council.
Motion to approve this item.
I have a motion and a second to approve agenda item number one. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. Next item.
Item number two, public hearing in consideration of an ordinance as requested in zoning case 2022-16 to amend Article 7 nonconformities, Article 8 definitions, Article 10 nonresidential districts, Article 12 planned development district, Article 13 lot and building standards, Article 14 allowed uses and use classifications, Article 15 use-specific regulations, Article 16 parking and loading, Article 17 landscape and tree preservation, Article 20 screening, fence, and wall regulations, and Article 23 exterior wall construction standards of the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city, ordinance number 2015-5-2 as heretofore amended, to align with specific land use policies in the comprehensive plan, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, a publication clause, and an effective date. This item was tabled at the February 13th council meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and executives. This is zoning case 2022-16. I'm Christina Day, the Director of Planning, and I'm here to present this. It is a request to amend the zoning ordinance to align some specific land use policies with the comprehensive plan. So, the history of this case, some of you may remember that the council adopted a new comprehensive plan back in 2021, after which we had a joint session with the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council in January of '22. And then staff started a process of making some changes to the plan based on some direction from that session later in the year in September. And so these changes are a result of that continued process. So at the joint session, we had retirement housing. You may recollect it, because we use sort of a Roman theme with thumbs up, thumbs down. We had four different considerations that are moving forward as part of, not necessarily as part of this case, because one is being moved to a future joint session. But tonight, we're going to talk about retirement housing in nonresidential zoning districts, multifamily housing in the commercial employment zoning district. Again, moving to the future joint session will be discussion on U.S. Highway 75 corridor redevelopment. And then, something new for you is single-family housing in the retail zoning district, because on the council strategic plan, we found that really aligned, it came up in some of the considerations on retirement housing and aligned with the strategic plan, so that's something we brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, this is another summary of these alignments. And so, issue A is retirement housing. There are four different classifications of retirement housing in the zoning ordinance today: independent living facility, assisted living, long-term care, and continuing care. Continuing care is a combination of the three prior classifications. And so retirement housing is currently in the zoning ordinance classified as an institutional use, and you see that long classification there. However, in the comprehensive plan, there was quite a bit of discussion at the Conference of Planner Review Committee. They felt fairly strongly that independent living facilities, because of the way they're normally built, should be categorized as multifamily residential. So you see, we've got this conflict between the two documents. And so we have multifamily residences that are not supported in a few of the future land use categories, specifically neighborhood corners, community corners, and employment centers. So, our proposal to rectify these situations is reclassifying the independent living facilities as a primary residential use rather than institutional, to align the zoning ordinance with the comprehensive plan policy documents, also to clarify the development standards that should be utilized for independent living facilities, making sure that they do fit the style of development, also to restrict new independent living facilities where multifamily development is not supported by the comprehensive plan, but allow it where it remains supported, and, again, clarify the standards for all retirement housing and supportive housing uses. Currently, supportive housing is a broader categorization, such as people with disabilities, and that's not recognized in the language today. So, examples here, we mentioned that long classification for institutional uses, independent living would be reclassified as primary residential. This is an example of a change clarifying the development standards, so adding some clarification of in, where apartments can take various forms. We do have a few mixed-use districts where multifamily, independent living, and single-family uses are all allowed, so they could take various forms, and we're trying to clarify how those uses are prevented and what's presented and what standards they would utilize. This issue is restricting, shows the changes to the use charts, so you can see the change of the use category, as well as the changes to the zoning districts that are impacted by new independent living facilities, and how they are not supported in specific areas by the comprehensive plan. In those four districts, we want to, do want to mention that assisted living, continuing care, and long-term care would not be impacted. This language is a special district requirement that's added to help show that existing uses will remain permitted uses. So we worked with the legal department to ensure that either facilities that are constructed or are part of the development process today would continue as permitted uses, not nonconforming uses, but permitted uses, so they can continue to exist. Also, we wanted to ensure they can continue very clearly to remodel, reconstruct, redevelop. There's some existing ordinance in the language today in the corridor commercial zoning district, as well as the urban residential district, and we modeled this somewhat on that existing language. Continuing care facilities are another issue, because they do allow independent living as a byright use, we wanted to make sure that that just didn't become an alternate source of, okay, I can't build independent living, but I could do continuing care, and make it sort of a backdoor way of utilizing the ordinance. So we looked at this pretty closely. We looked at definitions and how we could define that to be a distinctive use, and we found that many municipalities don't define this use, but we did find a definition that we liked in the Texas Health and Safety Code. So, there were some specific services that were called out in the, in the state, by the state of Texas, personal care services, nursing services, medical services, other health-related services. So you'll see that language being recommended in our ordinance language. So continuing care facility definition is recommended to change to include some of that state language that you'll see, personal care services, nursing, medical, other health-related services. So again, that comes from the state of Texas. You'll also notice some red text there, and that is, there was quite a bit of discussion about this at P&amp;Z. And so after that discussion, staff, including planning staff and legal staff, had a further discussion about clarifying this language. And so we thought it might be clearer if we separated out personal care services and then the health-related services, being nursing and medical services. So we're recommending that additional punctuation, because we think it's clear. If that was not discussed at P&amp;Z, for total transparency, if you don't like that, we can remove it, but we do think that that could help provide some additional clarification. So more changes to retirement housing. I did mention that supportive housing is being added, and that's because right now, many of those classifications also refer to individuals that need assisted living services. That's not necessarily related to age for some individuals, but right now, they're all classified under retirement housing. So we just think this is almost a cleanup item, where we just want to recognize that you don't necessarily have to be retired to need assisted or long-term care. So, this is the second issue, commercial employment district. The major focus of this district in the language today is corporate headquarters and research facilities arranged in a campus-like setting. So, this is largely located in the employment centers, future land use category. That doesn't support new residential uses. There has long been a unit standard for byright units. That's long been reached. 2,500 units were allowed by right. There's also a connection to the CB1 zoning district that we'll talk a little bit more about. So you can see that in the employment centers, future land use category, no housing is supported under the comprehensive plan. It's focused entirely on jobs. However, in that same area of commercial employment, there are some urban activity centers that's really generally CB1 zoning is aligned with the urban activity centers. Housing is supported there. So there's kind of the mixed-use core that's generally CB1 zoning, and that's surrounded by the employment center, future land use category, that's generally CE zoning. So we're trying to align those up. This is a map of how that looks, the blue being central business one, and the pink being commercial employment zoning. And then the hatched area is, shows you the future land use category, and so you can see how the hatching and the pink zoning, the future land use category and the zoning are generally in alignment. It's important to note that while these are not perfectly aligned, we feel like because there are relatively small areas of misalignment, that those could, if need be, or through redevelopment, we could use planned development districts for those small areas where there is a mismatch. So, proposals include restricting new residential uses in the CE district, consistent with our policy guidance, and updating the standards in these zoning districts to reduce complexity of administration. So our policies and our regulations align. So, the restriction would be to remove the SUP process where the city's policies do not recommend multifamily. And this is, while this is consistent with our current comprehensive plan, this, I want to say, has also been a longstanding comp plan policy as well, supporting employment in this area as the primary driver. Multifamily residences, this is the same sort of vesting or grandfathering language, where we want to ensure that people have a permitted use where they exist today, or are through the development process, or working through the development process, I should This is showing an example of how we are removing the existing language in the zoning district where units are already built, because they are already on the ground. We've put in the language that says they are permitted where they're already built, so this language is no longer needed. So our final issue in this zoning case, our single-family uses in the retail zoning district. This is in the council's strategic goals, and this relates to the initiative to develop a cultural continuous improvement and innovation through city government, innovative four-quarter retail, reducing areas to refresh existing retail demand, as well as revitalizing aging retail areas, increasing housing affordability, promoting diverse housing types with smaller footprint developments, and developing incentives to private investors by reducing regulatory barriers. So we believe it hits really a number of the strategic goals that council has right So, how does this work? So, how does this work? Well, it does fit with the comp plan, because it helps implement our typical neighborhood design. This is a longstanding land use policy that we have, where more dense housing goes towards the corners, really the intersections, and less dense housing is in the center of the neighborhood. So, it would continue that practice with the neighborhood corners and community corners having our more dense housing types. You can see how this aligns with our detached single-family and attached single-family types, aligning with our neighborhood corner and community corner land use categories, where we're looking at sort of reducing the barriers to development there. So, the proposal is to remove the requirement for a zoning process for those single-family uses. They are aligned with the dashboards in the comprehensive plan. We also want to clarify the screening and fencing requirements for residential uses in the retail zoning district, to ensure that they're compatible with any kind of existing commercial. So, single-family residents attached, so basically, a townhome would be permitted by right. That's 10 units per acre, could be up to 12 with a special approval. Single-family residents detached is also, depending on the zoning district, would be permitted, and two-family residents, again, depends on the zoning district. So, residential uses, this is the screening requirement. Typically, a commercial district would be required to screen from a residential district, because we think the residential district will be going in kind of as a retrofit. We don't think it would be very equitable to then require an existing retail corner to come back and put up screening, because something new is built next to them. So, we think the new use should essentially have to provide the screening, and that's what this is requiring. So, in summary, new standards for independent living facilities to align with multifamily uses, so there's not that distinction between age, just age-related distinction, permitting land uses in CE zoning to align with the Employment Centers Future Land Use category, and single-family residential in the retail zoning district. So, this aligns with a lot of the policies and actions in the comprehensive plan. I won't read them to you, but you can see them on the slide, as well as in graphical And we did receive three letters, all since the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in opposition. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we had two speakers in support and one who was neutral. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval by a vote of seven to zero, and with that, I'm available for questions you might have regarding the zoning case.
So, my question is about the independent living, and it totally makes sense to me to, you know, take it out of the office areas. But what I'm confused a little bit about is taking it out of the retail sections, because, you know, if I think about Collin Creek Mall or Haggard Farm, both of those are going to have independent living, and they seem like they might be attractive places for somebody who is retiring to be living near retail, because it would make it easier for them to get some of their retail needs met, or to walk to a restaurant. So, what are the thoughts on if we're actually making something more difficult for seniors or those retiring by taking it out of retail?
Right. I think the two examples you gave are good examples, because Collin Creek Mall is a UMU district, so that would not apply to, that would not be a retail zoning issue. And then, the Haggard Farm, that was a planned development district, so if they wanted to build independent living there, they could do it. I know, I think the independent living that's there is not part of the larger PD that they did. They did it by right beforehand, so it was utilizing the office-based zoning. So, that would be something that would change with time. So, that would be something that would have needed to be part of the larger planned development district that they've done. That would be a change from then to now.
But technically, what you're saying is that somebody could come back to you and say, I don't want to use the retail-based zoning, I'd just like to do a PD here, and then get these in them, correct?
It should be five acres or more. It should meet the PD standards, so it shouldn't just be, I want this zoning. It should be for a specific purpose with a special design. But if they have a real purpose behind it, not just, I want this land use, we would need to look at the specific standards of the planned development, that it's unique and it's meeting a specific community need. So, if it checks the boxes and meets the standards for planned development, then I think we would make it work.
Do you know what the average acreage is of our community retail corners that this is primarily going to impact?
They're going to be larger than five acres. I think the challenge with the retail corners is that the standards of the comprehensive plan are generally, it's the height limitation. A lot of the independent living facilities that we've seen built recently are three and four stories, and that's going to be a conflict with the comprehensive plan. Because the comprehensive plan is generally on the neighborhood corners, two-story, just like the existing retail zoning is two-story. That's why the single family is a good fit, because it fits in with the existing zoning standards.
Any other questions for Christina? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Do you have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Frank Turner.
My name is Frank Turner, and I'm here as a citizen of Plano on this item. I'm not representing a client other than myself. I'm a zombie. I'm one of the baby boomers who would like to take advantage at some point of senior housing opportunities. I'm proud to be a part of that group of boomers from 1946 to 1964, that represent the second-largest generation, next to millennials, population group in the United States. As we have wandered through the years, we have heavily impacted many institutions, starting with elementary schools that had to be greatly expanded because of baby boomers, and on to higher education, and of course, have profound impact on the labor force and the economy, not only in production, but also very much in consumption. We affected the economy. And now, we're entering retirement, some of us slower than others, like me. But it's estimated that 10,000 people cross the line to age 65 every day, 10,000 Americans cross that line. I think all of us have a responsibility to our seniors in providing adequate services and housing opportunities. It's a community responsibility, and it's not one that we could shirk, because the decision has already been made. We're here. We can't roll back the clock to 1946 and reset the birth rate. We're here, and we're aging, and we're advancing, and we're profoundly affecting America and every city and community in America. It's estimated in 2010 that there were 23,000 seniors in Plano. And a quick estimate by 2030, even assuming we are still well below national averages, that number will advance to 51,000 seniors in Plano, roughly 17% of our population, whereas the state will exceed over 20% of seniors at that point. We have a responsibility of providing for them. Now, one size doesn't fit all. As Ms. Daye stated, there are various classes of senior facilities and housing in our community, and many people will go kicking and screaming out of their single-family home. I hope to be one of those that goes kicking and screaming. But without housing opportunities, we will have little choice but to stay in our single-family homes. And that will profoundly affect the supply of housing for younger people who wish to live in our community. There are limited opportunities for expanding housing in our community, very limited. So, think about that. Think about that, if you will. The housing policies of the community need to be set based on demographic needs, and not trying to fit square pegs and round... To table this item, to allow for further study of demographic trends and how plaintiffs' housing policies match with those trends. It's our responsibility. Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing. Confine the comments to the council.
A quick question, Christina. Maybe I've looked at it wrong, but the way I see it is, nothing here that we're looking at in the consolidations, to me, it's more like housekeeping. It's cleaning things up, but I don't see anything that is particularly going to reduce the opportunity for us to still have housing, be it multifamily, or independent living, or single-family. Am I incorrect on that?
I think we're increasing the housing options in some ways, and we are restricting it in some ways, but it is housekeeping in the way that we're aligning it with our policies.
Okay. Thank you.
And to piggyback on Councilmember Smith's point, it seems to me that what we're doing here, and this may be a gross oversimplification, but we're kind of changing the default rules, but we can still, as you said in response to Mayor Pro Tem Prince's question, we could enact a PD where that's appropriate, we could rezone where that's appropriate, and so, would it be, is my understanding accurate that in some ways, we're changing the default rules, but we're not making it impossible for more senior housing to go in where it belongs? Because I do think Mr. Turner has a good point, that, you know, that we have a need for senior housing because of the growing senior population in Plano, but we're not foreclosing that option, are we?
That is correct.
Let me clarify a point, because certainly, we've known the need for senior housing in all types of housing, and I'm not just talking about senior housing, but even when we get to independent living housing and continuum care-type housing. We're not just talking seniors, we're talking other people that might have a mental or a physical disability and need those types of services of continuous care. So, when I saw in the information that we were removing the word elderly, I was actually pleased by that. But let me ask a question. I went back and took a look at the previous planning and zoning meetings to see where the objections were, because we've been working at this for some time. And it started, if I'm not wrong, in September 19th of last year, and I didn't hear anything as far as needing adjustments, other than, at that meeting, they determined that there was more discussion to have, and they rescheduled it for a further meeting. And I believe that meeting was November 7th, at which point, they felt there was further discussion that was needed, and they tabled it again to December 5th, and then it was tabled again to the 19th, where there was further discussion and further input, and finally, put on the January 17th meeting, where it was then passed. And then, it was put on the council agenda for February 13th, where it was tabled until this meeting. The point that I'm trying to make is, is that there has been significant and ample opportunity, I think, and I'm not sure where our communications went awry, that people didn't know that this was coming forward, but for it to arise now and say, well, let's table it again and have some more discussion, seems defeative to me. And in that case, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this item this evening.
I'd second.
Any other comments? Sorry. Councilmember Holmer.
I have a question for Christina. Dr. Casey's question, can you give me an example of a retail area that would be affected by this decision?
The retail zoning district is generally on most of the corners throughout Plano. So, what it would allow us to do is, right now, you need to go through a specific use permit process to do, to build, let's say patio homes on, if you have vacant land. So, what it would do is allow you by right to build those, rather than having to go through a zoning process, because it fits the dashboard of the comprehensive plan. So, we've gone through, we know it fits the height, it fits the density. We've gone through this public process of saying, this is a fit for the community. So, rather than asking someone to go in and go through a zoning process, we've said, hey, this is a by right development, you can do this type of single-family housing without the additional burden of going through a zoning process.
You could do independent housing.
Not, it could be senior restricted housing, but it doesn't have to be. It could be family housing as well. It would just be, it would be townhouses, patio homes, or duplexes essentially that could be built.
Okay. I mean, I guess I do have the concerns about us having limited independent housing, going back to, I like what has been pointed out, that we're not just talking about senior elderly housing, we're talking about people that maybe have some restrictions. We have limited inventory of single-family homes. We know that people are aging in place, because they have nowhere else to go, so that is a challenge. We know we have young families that are wanting to move into these homes, but until these people, and if I'm, I'm not sure, I know we have a senior tax freeze for people 65 and over. Are they, are individuals who are disabled eligible for that tax freeze as well? They are? Okay. So, potentially, we would be freeing up, we would be freeing up property inventory for young families to move in, that people could move elsewhere and increase our property taxes that are being frozen, because people don't have other options. Is that correct?
That is correct. The other thing I want to make sure I'm clear about is, those other categories of supportive housing are not being changed in the ordinance. It's only the age-restricted housing, independent living, the continuing care, assisted living, those are not being changed. Those are staying as-is.
So, is it not possible to have independent living that would include anyone that fit age category, or had a need for assistance due to mental or health?
You, the definition, you're not, the definition of independent living is that you are not supplying services to residents. It's essentially an apartment for, the only qualification is that the head of household is 55 years or older.
Or disabled?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. Well, I guess I just, I hear what Councilmember Grady is saying, that this has been kicked down a couple times and delayed. To be honest, I don't follow the P&amp;Z super closely until it gets to us, so I feel like now it's on my radar, and now I'm reading the letters from individuals that are saying, let's do some more research. So, I apologize if I'm a little late to that, but from what I'm hearing from constituents is that they would like to see a little bit more research or studies done, so I'm not sure I'm supportive of passing it at this point in time.
Councilwoman Williams.
Mr. Turner is correct.
Mr. Turner is correct in that our demographics are aging. And as Councilwoman Holmer just pointed out, there's not really many good options for empty nesters to move into, because I'm going to sound like a broken record on this, but we have a dichotomy of housing types. We're catering primarily to two life stages, when there are far more life stages and circumstances that people can find themselves in. So I find that it's a bit of a chicken and an egg equation, because our demographics are aging in part, not exclusively, but in part because of that dichotomy of housing types. They aren't freeing up the housing stock that is more appropriate for, say, middle-stage families. And so those new middle-stage families have, don't have the inventory to move into to keep at least our average age steady, maybe increasing more slowly. So to help alleviate that, I don't think that restricting the areas of the city in which we can entertain independent living development is really going to change that equation for the better or worse. But it does, as was just brought up, with some of these changes, make it a little easier to provide more housing stock. Again, we don't have much undeveloped land, but in the redevelopment opportunities, additional housing stock that, through the smaller footprint, ownership options, townhomes, et cetera, to provide for housing stock at the different life stages, so that we do increase our housing mobility, and maybe thereby reduce, at least reduce the increase in our average age over time, and provide greater housing mobility. And when seniors have more options to move into, because some certainly wanted to move into independent living communities a lot, they're happy to give up their single-family home, as long as it's for a smaller single-family home, without the stairs that they have to navigate, and maybe without the pool that they have to keep sinking money into. But with that, I support this.
I have a motion in a second to approve Agenda Item Number Two. Please vote. Motion passed at six to two.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know we only have one zoning case left. I was going to request a two-minute recess to quickly make a run down the hall if.
What?
2022-17 to amend Article Nine residential districts, Article Ten non-residential districts, and Article Fourteen allowed uses and use classifications of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the city, Ordinance Number 2015-5-2, as heretofore amended, to improve alignment of the residential community design and neighborhood business design districts with the comprehensive plan, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, publication clause, and effective date. This item was tabled at the February 13th meeting.
All right. Zoning case 2022-17 also has a history. Its history is perhaps a little longer. The Lannigan Zoning Commission approved districts back in July of 2020. Council tabled the districts in August of 2020, because we were in the CPRC process, and they wanted to see, you all wanted to see the outcome of that process, understandably so. So in January of 2021, council approved the districts with the understanding that it was limited to the Plano Event Center site, because the CPRC process still wasn't finished at the time. But you directed us to bring it back once the comprehensive plan process was complete, so we could look at if the districts could be applicable under the new comp plan. So as we stated previously, the new comp plan was adopted. And so we have been discussing whether or not these districts align with the new plan. And so we've drafted amendments that hopefully make them fit quite nicely with the new plan. And so that's what we've got for you this evening. So a little refresher on these, since it's been a while since you've seen them. There are two districts that are companion districts, neighborhood business design and residential community design. They relate, not exclusively, but are designed to help implement the Invision Oak Point Plan. They have a number of unique elements, including they have transition in heights from neighborhoods, they're low-rise, they're less intense mixed-use districts, so really intended to be a suburban-style mix of uses. They have walkable tree-lined streets, they require open space, there's on-street parking, they work together, so you could either do commercial or a mix of commercial and residential or residential. They're meant to be very flexible, provide a mix of housing and retail. So they are intended to meet us where our zoning has a gap with the market. So we have kind of intense, some intense housing types, some less intense housing types, and then there's some pieces of our, some tools that we're missing, essentially. So this gives us some of these tools. So this is intended to sum this up, that it's market-responsive. Right now, we're essentially using PDs to create these things. And oftentimes, things are either too intense or not intense enough, so we have to try to make things fit. And we're hoping that NBD and RCD can be an option for us to apply the new comprehensive plan and meet market standards in a more efficient way. So how does this work? Well, you're probably somewhat familiar with it, because it's a little bit like a UMU district, which helps us have some predictability. It's got an adopted development plan, so you should know what it looks like. It's got a governance association, so like a giant HOA. It's got street and sidewalk standards, minimum open space standards. And so moving on from here, one of the really unique elements is because we think these, our city is so developed at this point, we know it's likely to be near existing residential. So we've got this two-to-one height setback ratio transition that we gave people options on, and this was the preferred option. The, there is a mix of use requirement, where you have to have three different uses. We have these live-work-business-style, business loft uses that require someone to live upstairs from the business. So it's not an either-or business or residential, it's actually business plus residential. And then the housing types, there are eight different housing types. They're done in tiers to include a mix, and that mix lays out here with tier one is the least intense mix, with small lot, single family, some sort of cottage bungalow-type housing. Again, these are conceptual-type photos. Tier two are kind of the mid-range of housing today. And tier three are the more intense, like higher-density style of housing, but they're limited to 25% of the district, and you have to have 100 units minimum to even contemplate doing tier three. So how does that fit with the comprehensive plan? I guess we'll get to that in a minute, but this is how things play out. You have, if you're doing 50 units or less, you need to stick in kind of tier one. You could do tier two, 51 to 100 units, and then over 100 units, you can start adding tier three. So comprehensive plan alignment, we looked at Action RGM 5, so that's Redevelopment Growth Management 5. So we are proposing to add a standard that limits the NBD district with housing to no more than 50% residential square footage. So that would align with the Redevelopment Growth Management standard. Okay, moving on here. The same standard B has phasing requirements, so we're proposing to add a phasing requirement that will help meet the standard within the comprehensive plan. So for every two acres or feet of residential uses, you have to have one acre or foot of non-residential use in the development. And then Item C within that same action is that key design features are required concurrent with residential. So the proposed change is to require usable open space and planned trails during the first phase. Currently, we require street enhancements and sidewalks with the development. Action RGM nine is limiting small-scale multifamily developments to, that are at least 10 acres in size, to have no more than 25% multifamily units, and controlled by a governance association. We already have the governance association requirement, so that was already complete. But we had to mix up the unit categorization in order to meet this. So manor homes, as you see, the second tier far right are a multifamily type, and stacked flats on the last row are not, or also, those two are multifamily types. So we just combined those in tier two, I'm sorry, in tier three, is what I'm meaning to say. So tier three has now all the multifamily types. They're limited to 25%. You can only do it if it's over 100 units. So that should fit with the comprehensive plan guidance. It was kind of convenient that we already had that 25% standard in there, so it was a pretty easy fix. We reviewed the dashboards to see alignment. I don't expect that anyone can see this. I'm just showing you that we actually looked in detail at the zoning districts, the tiers, the various different land, future land use categories in detail, and what's the density, what's the intensity, what's the scale, what's the open space parking, all this stuff, and did a comparison of where they align and where they didn't, to see what changes might be needed. And the great thing about this, these districts is, we needed to amend some purpose statements to make sure they were compatible. So we said, locations need to be compatible surrounding neighborhoods, and develop, and we want to make sure that the development aligns with the comp plan, because these are all going to be discretionary, because they're all rezoning, right? So at the time of the request, P and Z and council both are going to get to judge, are the dashboard requirements being met? You consider them individually. So each of those in the requirements, if something is not quite, you need to tweak it, you need to move it down, we can all do that as part of each specific district's standard requirements. So we feel like that flexibility is really going to help us implement this for each. There were, there was a lot of alignment, but where there's a slight differential, we feel like we can make that up with amendments to the district, because of that flexibility that's built in. So again, we can add amendments with a few exceptions, and that will, our proposal is to allow more applicability, rather than creating more zoning districts, allow some flexibility with the minimum and maximum densities, so you all can use these more to implement the comprehensive plan. So you could use it in an urban activity center or in an expressway corridor. It may not meet it perfectly, but it gives you all more flexibility to meet the comp plan without creating additional zoning districts. So freestanding residential buildings, this was the last change. P and Z wanted to take out this limitation for 5,000 square feet on freestanding buildings. We think there are other practical things in the zoning district that make it okay. You're required to have pedestrian-friendly streets, parking in front of the buildings, you don't have drive-up windows. So I think that flexibility is fine. It's got a lot of comprehensive plan conformance, as you can see on the screen. And we've had no feedback on this. Either at P and Z, we did have a couple of speakers, however. So if you notice on the follow-up memo, that there was, there was comment from a couple of individuals at P and Z. But P and Z did recommend approval seven to zero. And with that, I'm available for questions. The speakers at P and Z were both in support, so.
Okay.
Available for questions, you might have.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Can you go back to the slide where you showed the requirements for the different housing types? I think you showed it twice.
Sure. I think it's that one, but the.
Yeah, okay. Can you clarify for me? Because the way I'm reading this, it says minimum housing types required three if you have over 100 units. So are we saying that if somebody had over 100 units, we're going to require them to have one from every tier?
It, it means that they, they don't have to have one from every tier. It just means of the eight housing types, they have to have three. They could have all from tier one. They could have all from tier one, if they wanted to.
But they have to have three distinct housing types. And so what is the purpose in requiring them to have three different, just to help increase our diversity of housing types?
Correct. And to, you know, make the neighborhood not look super cookie cutter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll open the public hearing.
There are no speakers on this item.
I'll close the public hearing. I'll find the comments of the council.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Item Number Three. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you. There being no further business, we are adjourned.